Now.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, good. At least we started off with sound for the first time, I believe, on time. So, welcome, everybody. This is the April 6, 2020 Alpharetta City Council meeting. Appreciate you all joining us here. As James indicated, members of our president accounted for it this time. And we'll go ahead and pledge allegiance. Actually, I don't have my flag background this time, so we'll just have to imagine.
I pledge allegiance. United States of America. And to the Republic. And one nation, one nation. This is invisible.
All right. So this evening's a little bit different than a typical council meeting because we do not have any business items. For those of you that aren't familiar with how our council meetings go. Workshops are just an opportunity for us as council members to learn more about certain topics, to discuss, give feedback to our staff and things like that. There won't be any business items. There won't be any votes this evening. So we'll go ahead and start off the workshop with this item, which is the update of COVID-19 impacts on the city's financial operations. I believe Director Harris should be somewhere on here.
I'm here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hopefully you can hear me.
I can, thank you.
Great. I believe James is gonna put up there the slide or the summary that I sent out Friday evening. Hopefully, it's, you can read it. What I tried to do here, put on one page, the impact of what we're seeing with the revenue. We really don't have a trend, but what our estimates would be now that we're responding to this COVID-19. That wasn't me. So in the top half deals with fiscal year 2020, and then the bottom third or half deals with fiscal year 2021. So when, and I got it pretty much in the fiscal year 2020, left-hand top corner, you're seeing what we projected on one of our first pages of our monthly financial reports. We were indicating in our January financial report to the council that we would finish the year conservatively with $2.5 million to the good. Actual revenues projected to be greater than budget. That's pretty typical of, you know, dropping conservative, being conservative and dropping money to the bottom line when we do our budget projections. So some of those things were obviously just, you know, maybe a little too light when we were budgeting. The big impact being property taxes coming in at $600,000 and really local option sales tax. That's a revenue of about $16.5 million, and we were going to exceed that by $650,000. So you move to the next column, you see, okay, what things are we now trending? Objections through June 30 of 20. Obviously, there's this, we don't expect any impact on property taxes as that's all based on the tax values that were established on 1-1-19. And although I do believe they'll probably be behind on some of their appeal process, et cetera. And our final dollars may not come in until after the fiscal year, but we don't really collect much after this date anyways. We've done most of our collections through December 30 and through January. So I don't see any impact to property taxes or motor vehicle title fees. So what you saw in January with the surplus will continue. Local option sales tax, I was a little surprised that the March payment that we got in March for the month of February was down 7% from the previous month and down from the 7% from the previous year for the same month. So we were starting to see a little slide in local option sales tax. I'm not sure why that was. Appears to be a little bit pre-social distancing policies being in place. So, but, because that was again for the month of February. But given that and given where with a lot of the closed restaurants, et cetera, and other businesses, and our estimate is that we will actually have to adjust that number by $500,000. And if you go to the far right, you'll see then ultimately, after the adjustment, what is the estimate variance over budget? So we will still finish, we think, at budget or slightly above budget, but it won't be as good as if we were projecting pre-COVID. Franchise type, I should say, some of these revenues are that we just get back in and we start reviewing it and we start looking at things through a fine-tooth comb. So there's not really necessarily a COVID impact per se. We thought franchise taxes are going to do a little bit better, so we, we don't want us to just see everything through negative view. We got our franchise payment from Georgia Power, I believe, in February. So we are, we know that number. We know we did a little bit better, plus we got from Sony, Sony Electric. So we're adjusting it by 107,000. The next alcohol beverage excise tax, we're going to take a hit for that. And that, I do believe, sales probably are up at the stores where you purchase, package stores where you pick up beer and wine and liquor. But obviously, all the restaurants in the sale of alcohol liquor by the drink is going to be severely impacted because of this. So we expect a $150,000 hit. We collect about $2.3 million in alcohol beverage excise tax. Building permit fees, we were starting to see a slowdown to some extent. So we had that at 100. I think we're gonna have $100,000 decrease. And now, after this, we're saying we'll have a $200,000 variance down. The big one really is recreation special event fees. As we've closed the facilities and as we closed the programming, we do expect that revenue to fall off through the end of the year through June 30, significant decrease. Likewise, there'll be an expenditure decrease as well on some of the programming costs, the instructors, et cetera, that we pay for a lot of the instructor-type programs. So we will see a decrease on the other side as well, on the expenditure side. Hotel motel tax, we were on pace to collect about $9.2 million in total hotel motel tax compared to an $8.8 million budget. This pennies, what we're showing here is the general fund pennies. The city gets three of those eight pennies that was going to generate 9.2. So we were looking at hotel motel tax coming in at least 100,000 to the good. That's the far-left column. And now we project that, our projection, the city on our side, our pennies will only be about 2.7 million. The rev par on, from the end of March is that, that's the revenues per available room. So in essence, it's ultimately, they give you it to a dollar amount, let's say it's 20 bucks, $20. It used to be $100 at the beginning of the month. So we just know the revenues are down 85, probably 85% down from the beginning of month of March to the end of the month of March. And we still got to collect April, May, and June. We still got to collect March, April, May, but I know the March numbers from Janet has given us the rev par number. So they're high occupancy or a high-low occupancy and they're lowering the charges to the room, the room fees. So ultimately, again, you're only at about 15%. Revenue's being collected by the hotels, probably you're at 15% of what they should be. So we're going to take a significant hit on the general fund side of 750,000 related to those pennies. And so that's about it. When we carry that all over to the, how are we going to finish the year? The revenues are, we're showing here in a surplus position still slightly by 185,000. Could be a little off, up or down, you know, that what's going to carry us this year and provide the fund balance for the 2022 budget is our expenditures. We do expect our expenditures, because we budget it conservatively all the time, that we will probably get between two and two and a half million dollars of expenditure drop to the bottom line. And so that will provide, again, the fund balance for 2022. So we'll end up in a surplus position from the, from the standpoint of revenues and expenditures, operating revenues and expenditures, it is. But, but it's primarily obviously coming from the, the fund balance that's going to be generated will be coming from coming in under budget. And with that said, Bob is already working with departments and has frozen positions until we learn more, know more. And so anything that's out there other than public safety sworn officers have been scrutinized and are being held back and not filled. Departments are working with us to make sure that anything they're putting through from an operating standpoint is essential expenses. No travel, no training. We'll probably save probably maybe 125 to 150,000 remaining of this year related to travel and training alone. So again, that helps drop that two and a half million dollars to the bottom line for the expenditure side. So that's where we are on the current year. When we come down to do 2021, we sort of take the approach of what did we show you when we were at the retreat and subsequent to retreats whenever we've had conversations? We were looking at 21 budget that we would have in the neighborhood of a million dollars for new initiatives. And that, I should mention, that million dollars was on top of, in addition to putting away some dollars for possibly capital or bonding. When I was asked one time, how much could we have? And I said 25 million. There was hotel motel that was going to provide about a $25 million bond. There was, the debt service on that is about 1 million, I think 1,250,000. Let's say 400,000 of that was coming from hotel motel taxes. And then we had about 850,000 between the millage swap and savings on a bond refunding that we're still going to be able to do. We haven't been able to do it yet in the market, and I can give you an update on that later. But, so between all that, that was going to provide us the money on top of a million dollars for new initiatives. So let's just deal with the million new initiatives. Take these revenue adjustments, basically, the two big ones is the local option sales tax. If you continue that, sort of that decline, you know, I think we'll, we'll lose a million six from what we would have projected. And then likewise, on the hotel motel portion, we're gonna only collect on the general fund side about 2.55. And it was budgeted this year to be at 3.3. So we are going to take a hit there from the original estimates. We're going to lose 918,000. So if you carry that all the way through, I think the next big one, obviously, well, there's a couple that are big. Franchise fees, we're still up in the air whether or not we'll take a hit on franchise fees, but there's a lot of businesses closed. So, you know, there are electric bills and all that telephone, but they still may be doing a lot of that at home. And we may, we may recover some of those numbers. We may be a little tough on that one. But going back, I should go back to hotel motel. This, we have no trend to build this. So for the hotel motel, it's, when do you think we'll be up? You know, what does each month look like as we look out to next year? When do we think we'll be at normal occupancy, normal rev par in these hotels? I think we're going to learn a lot more through the ACBB and through the players over the next month. But I would say our number projects a concept similar that we would go from 10 or 15% right now to maybe 80, 90, 90%, let's say, by January 1 of next year. That could be too aggressive, may not be. And then from there, it would finish out, you know, upwards towards 100. Does not try to presume a second round of COVID in the winter of next year that hits us for those hotels again and in that concept. So I think it's a reasonable number now to that haircut and assume. Again, we were overall going to collect 9.2 million dollars in hotel total eight pennies. And now we're projecting 6,750,000, which is a 27% drop. And I guess I said, if we don't think we're going to get to 80% or let's say 90% by January 1 of next year, because if the psyche or the businesses don't get back up to that speed into travel, then, then this number will take another haircut. And it could possibly, if it only made it to 50% by then, then it's possible we could see another 500 to 750,000 dollar impact negatively on hotel motel. So that's the rest of it. We now are at a, that would project us at a 3.379 deficit million. So the middle column now starts dealing with some of the options. And again, they're just on paper, just to give us some ideas of what, what we could do. Sort of follows a little bit. Bob and I have been through similar drills, maybe not quite this drastic in this, obviously not this drastic and this fast with economic impact, immediate impact and, and with the potential of coming out of the impact soon, but we just don't know. But, so to begin with, we're working with departments to get, you know, since, you know, they know as well as we all do that we're facing these kind of revenue shortfall. So they're taking a look at their budgets and gonna look to see through travel, training and any other programs they're doing, whether we could shave out about 450,000. I feel, I feel pretty confident that we'll be able to do that. They're great department directors. They will look every, which way they can to try to pick up those savings. So that was that. Remember I mentioned earlier about 850,000 or so between the swap and, and, and really it was going to count on the swap for the next year to pick up 250,000 again. But, but that funding for the bond of 25 million, hotel motel is gone, so it can't provide the 400,000 to anything. But if we used that 850,000 in the two sources there, you would start having, you know, erasing the deficit. The frozen positions and some of that, we could get upwards towards 500,000 in the budget if we maintain those frozen positions through the year. And then the, unfortunately, the raise that we were going to April 1 was the date of that raise. If we gave that raise, it would have a million dollar impact on next year's budget. And then the 2021 budget, which I should say, these were in the original budget when we had the retreat. We assumed we would give the April 1 raise, so we built next year's budget on that. Then we assumed we'd give the April 1, 2021, 3% raise, and that's a $300,000 impact. So if we remove them for now until we learn more, you're getting a lot closer to the deficit. Again, it's early, you know, and I'm not trying to be pessimist, but there's probably, there's probably a little bit of higher chance that these numbers could get a little more negative before they get positive, possibly, over the next month as we learn more. But, but that's just our best guess right now. And so we have a little bit of deficit. To the right is just the two things that we know were initiatives that we just have to keep an eye on and have come, come up with some game plan. The first being that the DEA drug dollars that we receive by our share of when we make these drug arrests. The forfeiture dollars that we get has been funding three positions for a unit or task force unit of about 317,000. At some point, that revenue stream is starting to slow down. It did just recently have an uptick. So we do think it could probably cover those positions for one more year, next year. And we may not need to immediately bring them into the budget and talk to the chief too, as far as what, what the future holds for that task force and stuff. But as far as just funding it, we may be able to fund it with the DEA monies and not need to bring it into the general fund. But it's out there for us to know, that's potential. The next is with the city of Milton relocating their ladder truck. We came up with an option, the fire department and public safety director to get a quint, which is a pumper slash ladder truck in one. And you can staff that with six people as opposed to 12. And between getting that quint and getting them a, and I think an F-250 so they can do quick response unit. They need to have that up and running in 2022, I think, late fall, maybe in fiscal year 21, 22, so late 21. I believe. So it was always our goal to try to get some dollars appropriated for that, at least try to head towards half the impact into this year's budget. You still could reserve it, you could put it towards capital, knowing that you're going to unwind it and hire the people the next year. But you gotta, the concept was to at least get the budget so that if we end up in a recession-type issue going forward, that we're not trying to find all eight, it's really about 850,000, I think, to get the, pay for the lease on the quint and hire the people. So trying to get half of it or close to half into this year's budget just makes it easier if, if you end up having some headwinds going into 2022 fiscal year budget. So that is where it stands right now. And again, and if next week or two, we should be able to get the departments seeing whether or not they can make some of these cuts. We'll get, circle back with the mayor and as long as, whatever impact updates we need to provide you all and get close to putting together a budget. Obviously, I think the budget will have, as we get into the capital, will probably just follow in what we've done in the past. It'll probably have, probably be a good idea to put a good portion of it in or amounts of it, I should say. I don't know if it's a good portion, but certain dollar amounts aside for unallocated capital, keep it aside so we can learn more as the year goes on. And, and same with the general fund. I put a, in the middle column there, middle, bottom row, middle column, 2021 budget, I put, oh gosh, I've no, it's somewhere around here. Oh, recurring capital transfers, 5 million, currently $5 million. You see, I got a question mark. I think as we build the budget, we'll probably want to, going back, that we could, numbers could change, we could see a worse position. We, that is a line item in the general fund budget that funds 5 million of recurring capital. And it's a good thing that we stay on top of recurring capital and that we use a, a allocated appropriated line item, meaning the current tax year is paying for it. But we may be able to use some one-time dollars from other project accounts or other capital dollars and fund some of that this year through one-time money and then reserve maybe half of that, maybe like two and a half million and hold it as a reserve. So you still may be able to keep up with recurring, but you're still holding back this reserve line in your general fund in case the revenues are worse than what we had projected. And then it just gives you an idea. Just generally speaking, you probably would slow down maybe some of your deferment of recurring dollars, possibly. But I don't want to lose the fact that you still don't want to take it away from the budget completely as a line item because soon as things turn around, you have to come back up and try to build that up like you would with staff. You need to get back to funding 5 million dollars, if that makes sense. I just want to mention that a lot of times you may defer some of your capital program or use one-time money to fund some of your recurring for next year. Hopefully, that's, sort of can understand what I put on the paper there and we can open it up for questions.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Okay. Sorry, I was muted there. James had muted me. I couldn't get it unmuted. May I approach Tim Mitchell? Councilman Burnett had already hit me up for a question a few minutes ago. So if you'll allow him to go first, I'll call on you next.
No problem. Thank you.
Councilman Burnett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom, with respect to T-Spots money, do we have any idea? How far in arrears do we find out what the, what that funding looked like? I can't help but imagine that, that revenue metric is going to take a beating.
We, it's similar to local option sales tax, which we've spent a little more time looking at. Like I mentioned, we were down 7%. I did not look at that same relationship with T-Spots, but generally it follows pretty much the same logic that it would be down in March. So we are, we run one month behind. I can look into that more. I do think T-Spots, as you, we sort of look at the long picture of that. The long picture through May of 2000, correct me if I'm wrong, 2022, is how long we'll be collecting or through April, I should say, I think it's April, somewhere around there, 2022. So we take the long view that we're going to collect 58 million. You're right, the short-term view, it may take, seriously, it will take a hit, obviously, and we can track that. But we have a little bit of longer view of adjusting, is it going to come back over that window to fund our projects? That we, that Bob was just recently showing you present, you know, presentations of the projects to 58 million is what we thought we'd get in that five-year window. How much of a hit is that now going to take? Short-term, surely, you know, but is there a recovery down the road? But we'll take a more deep look at that over the next week.
What second question, just, and it's more philosophical. We voted for a tax allocation district to be at North Point Mall. Do we have any, this obviously isn't going to help property values over there. Is there any, have you, have you given that any thought? Is anything you and Sean and your team think is high level on, on what impact that's going to have?
Well, I mean, generally speaking, on, well, overall, on the, on the digest, I guess, we would expect that our digest on the commercial side, citywide, will start seeing a hit next year's digest, 2022 budget year because of the values that we'll see, the assessments we'll see at 1-1-20. Okay? Because what's happening right now with office buildings and vacancy and so unless that turns around between now and January 1 of next year, their rents will be down, could be down. And so I do think we'll see some property digest overall decline on the commercial side. Not so sure on the residential side because we already have the homestead exemption and most people are undervalued compared to their fair market value anyways because they got the homestead, the floating homestead exemption. So we have not worked too hard on that as far as the tad. We did just get it certified through, through the county's assessment process. And, and right now, we're the only party to it. We need to, you know, obviously. We need to, you know, obviously continue to work to get the county and the school board to contribute, you know, on that TAD as well, then we'd be able to fund the projects. But I've always assumed the TAD is going to go forward and sort of it's able to carry out those projects that it needs to carry out and it shouldn't necessarily have a direct negative impact to the projections we were having on our general fund going forward.
My last question, I asked the mayor, if I could speak to it. He, obviously with the second half of the year initiatives, how many of those projects have been contracted and how much money that is still available? Should we decide that there are some of those projects we would like to hold back on as a council?
Yeah, I apologize. I, we sent out a work, a capital project list last week. I think that had a lot of those projects. We've not, as a city, and Bob could attest, we've not internally said, no project goes forward on that on a capital side, operating side or small capital items that people spend out of their general fund budget, we put a hold on. But the rest is, I could get that worksheet back out to you all. You could see that obviously there's the mid-year items, but plus a lot of the other items, that there's a lot of available projects that we could reappropriate and.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And yes, Tom, if you could get that list to us, I think that would be very helpful. Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, I believe you have a question. And I think Councilman Binder will be there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Harris, you covered, you covered many things. I just want to follow back up on the recreation program fees. This comes at an awful time for the Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department because it hit right during the majority of the, of the events that we normally produce. How much is the cost that we produce these events for? And I can't imagine this being that much of an offset, the twenty percent loss, when you consider the cost of the events.
Yes, there will be a sizable on the expenditure side as well. There will be a decrease in expenditure. We're working with, with Morgan to determine that. So on the, on the current year, we'll, we'll definitely have those savings and then we're working with them to come up with the right budget on the expenditure side that he'll have. But it's going to be what it's, if it's not going to be, something's going to be closed, then it's not going to be, you know, open. So it's primarily on your pool and those things. Are they going to be opened at all during the summer? Who knows? Are we going to be advocating people to come out fully to the pool, even if we back off on some of our, you know, distancing requirements and stuff? It's, that's going to be interesting. So there is a, it goes both ways. There will be savings on the expenditure side as well.
Okay. And overall, as, as things evolve, we, we won't know how many weeks that businesses are going to be closed throughout the nation and, and throughout the state. And the longer they run, the more of a financial impact it's going to be for all of us. We'll know more next week and the week after. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And, and we, we plan for some of the worst, but we hope for the best. And, and again, I think these numbers are trying to be right down the middle for now, but I think this is going to be, you're going to be in our field, in my field from this point forward. I mean, you're going to probably constantly be giving me advice and me giving you guys some numbers back on, on, on where we're going to, where this is going to peg out because we're all learning as we go on it. We don't have anything, a reference point on, on where this is going.
All right. Thank you.
Just to follow up on Mayor Pro Tim's question about the special events and those revenues within parks and rec, a lot of those revenues would be fees for the sports programs and different programs that they would put on, but a lot of that is just a pass-through. It would also go back to either the associations or individual contractors who may teach classes and things like that. Have you worked with Director Rogers to see what the net would be? Because I think that's what we're really interested in knowing.
Yeah.
The net impact, because a lot of that is just going to be expensed right back out.
We are working with them. We're trying to build his budget out from the expenditure side and then work back on the revenue side and we could get a, a net. You know, we took a first view from a revenue side saying that's not going to be there.
Right.
And tried to work on the expenditure side as well, but we have been working with them and we'll work towards getting a net, so to speak, a net budget impact.
Thank you. I've assumed that you have, but I thought I'd ask while we were having this workshop. So thank you very much. Councilman Binder, I believe you have the next question.
Yes, sir. So you all answered a couple of them. The, when you had, I think it's called discretionary from your operations and maintenance fund for next year's budget, the discretionary portion. I know that when we were having the bond discussions earlier in January, February, when you had that twenty-five million, a portion of it was non-personnel operations, finding efficiencies, I think you found like, said assuming two percent. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So for, I think you, based on, if we have about a fifteen million dollar operations, that four-fifty is about a three percent cut? Is that, is that correct? My math kind of on point there?
Trying to do this so you don't hear me punching numbers here because I want you to believe it comes out of my head, but.
You said, you said it was four hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Yes, and I, and it's three percent. And I, you are correct. And, but I should mention that, that, that line is, going back to Mayor Pro Tim's and Mayor Gilvin's question, is that four-fifty, a portion of that is going to be the park program cuts. We, that will be a portion of it, not cuts, but the quid pro quo, you know, the, the decrease in the paying for the instructors and the pass-through expenses and stuff. So that.
Absolutely.
But I think we, we should be able to hit that number. We may do, do a little bit better in that number when we really, you know, look at travel and training and stuff in departments.
Well, and that's, that's the piece that I'd like to see when you, when you kind of hone in on what that would look like. And I, I agree with that, but if you take the two percent, which was right around three hundred or whatever you had in your notes for the twenty-five million dollar bond that were efficiencies, those, those would be long-term savings. I would assume since you were going to use those for bond funding hypothetically at that time. But, and then the portion here, the other portion that you're going to look at is short-term savings because of the situation we're in, where there'd be limited programming, limited travel and education for right now. So I'd like to see how that's kind of tiered out between those two items where it's long-term efficiency that we've talked about for the past year or two. And then, you know, based on the current situation we're in, short-term savings on that operation fund, like the travel, the, the programming, that kind of thing.
Well, we'll get a, or try to put a detail together of where those cuts are and then sort of put them in which bucket we see as far as short or long. I mean, obviously, we live in this world for a long period of time, then even some of the frozen, I'm sure Bob will be working with all of us to say, okay, that's the frozen position, maybe you can get that position back. But how do we operate with one less person in your department? You know, if we're go long-term in this, then we're going to have to come up with more answers, but obviously we also want to be providing, you know, good services for our residents. But I'll, I'll put those lists together and we can share that and we'll go from there.
Yeah, that, that long-term we can use for reallocation towards other needs that we, we have, you know, once we get, we get through this. But I think that's, I think that's good. They've, they've talked about this going into waves, so we would see it again in the fall and we don't know what that would look like. Hopefully it wouldn't be, the policies in place right now wouldn't be as stringent as what we're seeing right now for the fall, but it's, it's good to, I, I think it's good to save as much as we can in capital dollars because we don't know what the rest of the year is going to look like with, with the waves of the pandemic that they're talking about. And then I know you're working with staff right now for my second question on, on the capital list, but when can we expect to see that as a council? I know we, we typically wait for the mayor's budget for it, but what, what capital list we're, we're thinking about going forward with and, and not for the next year's budget?
Uh, soon as we can. We're trying to get that finalized by the departments now, but right now we also got them jumping back into their operating budget when they didn't think they, they thought some of that was resolved. But we'll get on it over the next two weeks and, and should be have an idea and, and a pretty good view of what Bob Guy's opinion is, at least from a staff perspective of some of these capital projects and what we should hold back and stuff. And then we'll share that with the mayor and, and the whole unit, you know, group as soon as we can.
So, and then for the, this year's capital items, we have, like we, mid-year we approved things like bathrooms and the Hopewell Roundabout. Is that currently going forward?
I don't know that with specificity right now. I don't, I don't think we've held back, but I just don't think time-wise they've been able to jump on all of them yet anyway. So I think we have a lot of movement. So we're in a good spot for everybody to see what's there and reappropriate if necessary. And I, I did send that memo. I think somebody thought, they found it, but of all the capital projects, but I'll resend it. It was just an available, you know, of what's available for that project line item.
Yeah, no, I, and that's good to see what's available for it, but also kind of knowing, okay, what's in the works for putting bids out and that kind of thing.
I'll try to give a, we'll try to add to that with that because we do so, but yeah, I'll tell you in the next month or two whether something's already going through the channels.
So those, those short-term projects were, you know, it takes a year or less to, to put in a, a roundabout or renovate facilities in the parks, that may be good to just kind of put on a, the back burner for a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions for Director Harris? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and just say, Tom, I appreciate the tremendous work you and your staff have done and all our directors and the entire staff as far as trying to keep things going, trying to, to be sensitive to the expenses because I know it's, it's not coming in like it was before. But we appreciate all the hard work and continue to have this conversation. If you could push out as much of this information as quickly as possible, I think that would help us as we're thinking strategically towards next year's budget.
Thank you. And yes, I will. Thanks.
I know that you will. Thank you. So that will close the discussion of the impacts on cities' financial operations from the COVID nineteen and we'll move on to the workshop item legislative update. Mr. Regus, do you want to start off with this one?
Well, yes, sir. Yeah, I wanted to introduce Don Bolia. Again, you all know Don is our lobbyist this year and Don wanted to bring y'all some updates from the legislature, from what he is hearing and gleaning from the CARES Act and I believe some other information, Mr. Mayor. So with that, I'll turn it over to Don.
Good evening. How are y'all doing today?
Good.
Great. All right. Thanks for letting me participate in your workshop. Just wanted to bring you a couple of updates. As you all know, the legislature only went through day twenty-eight, which was March the twelfth, and they suspended the session after day twenty-nine. And on March thirteenth, they had a, I'm sorry, March sixteenth, they had a special session to appropriate funds for this COVID nineteen issue as well as to give the governor certain powers. And so as you know, the governor's issued many, many executive orders at this point. I, I, we've been emailing those to you as, as part of our weekly report, so hopefully that's been helpful and we're glad to go into any specific questions about that. But we think that those are fairly straightforward. There's some ambiguity about who's considered essential. And the way I've sort of looked at it is it's, it's almost hard to argue that you're, that any industry is not essential. So most people can find ways to continue to work based on the way the executive order is, has been written. There's a lot of up in the air with the elections. We're very concerned. The Secretary of State was originally pushing against any change from the May nineteenth primary date. The Speaker of the House, David Rawls, has been pushing for a change. The question is, how do they get that done? The Secretary of State is saying he doesn't have authority to do so. The governor says he doesn't have authority to do so. So there's some question about whether that date will move. And unfortunately, the best advice we can give you and your folks, and I know with the county is going to have to deal with it mostly, not this, not the city, but I think they're going to have to just assume that the election is going to be on May the nineteenth and we'll wait to hear from there. The Department of Labor issue is getting a lot of guidelines from the federal government. And I think we pushed out some information last Friday about that. I think one of the things that's critical is that the way they're, they're actually allowing unemployment benefits to go to people who are independent contractors, those who have worked on commissions and that sort of thing, those things that haven't been done in the past. And all of those benefits should be able to be gotten immediately. And I know you guys had some questions about the SBA loan called the Paycheck Protection Program. And I should put a caveat, I am not an attorney. Our law firm is, our firm is not a law firm, I should say, and we always encourage you to, to talk to your, your attorneys at the city when you're dealing with these issues. But I can give you some, some highlights of it. It is a very robust program. Let me just make sure I just get some highlight numbers here for you. The program is three hundred and fifty billion dollars. Any business that has five hundred or fewer employees can participate, but the way I've read it, there are many, many, many exceptions. So we sent out a PowerPoint that was given to us by a law firm. They did a very good analysis of it and we encourage you to look through that law firm and look at that guidelines because there's many, many ways around that five hundred employee number. I would say the biggest piece of it, and the main thing to understand is that it really is about companies that maintain their employees. So it's a low-interest loan, but if you do not fire anyone, if you do not reduce their compensation in any way, shape or form, all of the, the loan is completely forgiven. So there's, there's lots of benefits there, almost, I would imagine, a, a large number of businesses in Alpharo will be able to benefit from it. And, and all these loans are going to be administered through banks. We understand today was the first day that these, the applications were going through and we understand that because of the volume, the system crashed for a period of time. You can imagine, I think everyone's going to have to learn to be a little patient. No one was expecting this kind of volume and so it's going to take a little while. But I think that if you look at the benefits, they're tremendous. So I wanted to just point out to that PowerPoint that we sent to you and if you can look through that. And then the last thing is, there's about a hundred and fifty billion set aside for state and local governments. I know Mr. Regus and his team have been working pretty closely. I think some of that money, because it goes to first responders and so there's some ability to get reimbursed for some of those expenses that you're incurring at this point. So I encourage you to look forward to that. With regards to when we think the session will return, we really don't know. The General Assembly must pass a budget by June thirtieth of this year. They had passed what they called the supplemental budget, the House and Senate, but the, what they often refer to as the big budget, FY twenty-one budget, has not been passed. And so we know they're going to return. We understand that in all likelihood, teacher raises are off the table. State employees were supposed to get a benefit, a boost. I understand that's off the table. We understand that the General Assembly may not come back and, and actually finish the last eleven days. They're not required to actually be in session for forty days. They just can't exceed forty days. So they may be in session for four or five days, just enough time to get the budget done. And we have no idea when they're going to be back. I will say this, because they're technically sealed in session, members of the General Assembly can't raise money. So if you can imagine, there is a political conundrum that's occurring when you've got a primary that's in May, May nineteenth. And if you're a member of the General Assembly, until they make some decision, you can't raise money. You can campaign, you can electioneer, but you can't ask for money and you can't raise money. So it could be problematic. So I, I suspect that they're working very hard to come up with some short-term solution to get them back in session for a period of three or four days to pass the budget and adjourn and sign a die so that those, those members of the General Assembly that have primaries can get back out there and campaign and, and raise money. And then, of course, the general election will be. And then of course, the general election will be looming upon them sooner than they expect. If they decide to move the primary back, date back to June, which is what the speaker's been advocating, because Georgia's in a unique position. We're required to have a very extensive lengthy runoff period. And so you could see a runoff in August, if that's the case. And then of course, the general elections in November. So it puts a lot of pressure on these folks running for office, the statewide candidates. So with that, glad to answer any questions and hopefully our reports that we're sending out on Friday are helpful. And we plan to continue to do so as long as we're going through this process.
Thank you, Don. I appreciate that. Good to know that there is some resources out there available at least. We appreciate you updating us on that. Do we have any other questions from council at this time? Councilman Binder?
James, I think he might be muted.
I'm muted. Yeah. Okay.
I'm not seeing him muted. He should be open.
All right. Let me, let me try it again. For our, for the elects, the presidential election, if anybody early voted, does that, what are they doing with those votes? So they saying, okay, vote again, or how many times do I get to vote? Do I get to vote twice since I voted early or once?
No, they're, they're keeping those in a lockbox. The one, two voted, you, you can't change your mind. You can't revote. Those, those, those are in a box and they'll be counted whenever they decide to hold the election again. Right now they're planning to have it on May 19th. And the question is, how do they start the early voting process? My understanding is that the, their solution was to send every single voter an absentee ballot application. And people need to understand it's not the ballot itself. You're only getting an application. Then apply to get the ballot. You must submit that in and then you'll get the ballot back in the mail. You vote and you submit that back to the Secretary of State.
So was it essentially going to be two ballots that we received out? And that was because I got that mailer, but they didn't say, okay, you know, this is for the statewide ones as opposed to the presidential. And there was no way to say, you know, I need, only need one or not the other.
My understanding is that you'll get, the ballot will be a single ballot, but it'll include the presidential preference primary along with the general primary voting options on it. So you'll have one single ballot that'll include both. That's my understanding.
Okay. And then, do you know, hear anything going on where they're looking at helping us make available? I know we've kind of the past where we've looked at things like sanitation and, and we may not be able to do that because it wouldn't apply to all. But we're, we're probably going to need to help both, you know, residents and then also commercial interest. So being able to have the availability to do tax credits, property tax credits on either the commercial or residential side. So maybe not a permanent home sit exemption, but something to that effect. Are they discussing anything that we can help give us powers at the local level without the hoops we would normally have to jump?
You know, unfortunately, they have to convene to give you those powers. And the question is, can they convene in a timely manner? My understanding is the Speaker and Lieutenant Governor did a call out to many of the legislators and leadership told them to basically get a very short list of the bills that they had to pass. So I think that it's a very small list outside the budget. You may see some type of a tax credit bill, which I think they are thinking about. Other than that, I think there're going to be a very short list of bills. They don't have time to debate. And then there's a question of how do they actually procedurally do this? And I think they haven't figured out any of those things yet. I will say this though, what I would encourage you all to do is let's look at all the tools that are in law right now. I mean, it's unlikely that Alpharetta would get another state opportunity zone credit, but you do have one in the city of Alpharetta. It's a small one. I think it just covers one or two buildings. But this is the time to make requests that you don't think you normally would get. Because you can make the argument to the governor and to the Department of Community Affairs, this is the time we need to get businesses jump started. So if you can apply for a state opportunities to own credit, even though Alfred is a very wealthy city, we were able to, or we, you all were able to get a very small one. A few, I think it was six or seven years ago, and they're, they're a 10-year credit. It's worth, if you, if you got one in 2020, it wouldn't expire to the year 2030. And I don't know if you're familiar with the state OZ credit, but it's a 3,500. If you're an employer and you hire two or more new employees, you get a $3,500 credit each year for five years or $17,500 against your withholding taxes to the state. So there's no impact to the city. It's all state withholding taxes. And so if you imagine you hired 100 people, it has to be new employees to Georgia. You would get a $1.75 million credit from the state against your withholding taxes. So it's still a very powerful credit, probably the most powerful one they have. I'm not saying it's not a long shot. I think it's an absolute long shot that Alfred would get it because of your wealth. However, if you're going to ask, this is the time to ask for something like that.
Fair enough.
Don, following up on that, would that, if we were going to try that route, wouldn't it make sense to do it for something like perhaps the North Point area where we could absolutely, we have already made a case for a tad. So I mean, we've already got the presentation there to support something like that.
Absolutely. So the way the legal process to work is that the city must be the applicant. You must define a zone and the zone could be as small as one census tract. Technically, the zone could be the entire city, but as you know, they're, they're not likely to give that to you. But if you design a census tract or block of census tracts that you deem, that you deem need help, the city then must declare that census tract blighted as an official act of the general, of the, of the council. And then you would actually put together an application to the state. And I know Bob's probably pretty familiar with this because he's the one who processed the, the one you do have. And then the Department of Community Affairs would have to approve it. And then the, the, the GDEC, Georgia Department of Economic Development Commissioner would have to sign off. And then you would be given the credit or given the zone, a declared state opportunity zone.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Don at this point from council? All right, Don. Well, we do appreciate your help. Appreciate you joining us this evening, man. Stay safe.
A pleasure. You too.
So at this time, now I'll toss it over as part of the legislative update to Matthew Thomas, our Economic Development Manager here in the city. I believe I see him on the call here. James, you may need to unmute him. So he can give us an update on some of the national programs and other things that are available and what he's able to do. And perhaps we can discuss some opportunities moving forward.
Hey, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
All right. Awesome. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. You have compiled several, several resources and I want to kind of break, break my floor time or Zoom time, if you will, down in a, two segments. The first one is about things that we're currently doing as far as supporting many of our existing businesses and industry. And the second part will then get into getting some feedback, if you will, on our current strategic plan project, which is underway. As, as we, of course, our sort of trajectory, you heard the numbers from Tom, looks, it looks different now than it did when we initially approved of the strategic plan. So I just want to kind of break it down into two pieces. So on the resources front, Don's kind of already mentioned some of the SBA resources that, that are available. And we've been pretty, we've been very proactive about making sure that our business community knows about those resources. You've got things like the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, which is up to 10K. They made these, these, these COVID-19 programs pretty quickly accessible that the SBA, the site did crash a couple of days ago. And so there's, there's a lot of volume right now on, on requests coming in. And you've all seen some of the recent numbers too, about the, the unemployment rate climbing at a, at a very high level right now. So businesses are feeling it, but the, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, I think is, is, is one of the more popular loan programs, if you will. But the SBA also has a Paycheck Protection Program, which covers it helps businesses get, again, quick access to, to, to capital when they need it. Most of this helps with things like operating expenses, if, if they do have to shed jobs or, you know, if, if, if they do need help on, on getting by on their day to day, they've got a paycheck protection program. They've also got several, what they call express bridge loans, which is quick access up to about 25,000. If a business has an existing relationship with what they call an SBA express lender. I believe we have some of those in the Alpharetta area. And then there's also debt relief, which means basically the SBA will help a business get relief on their debt from an SBA loan to help pay down things like principal, interest and, and different fees on the 7A and 504 SBA program. So those are some of the few sort of SBA, what they're really sort of promoting in their toolkit right away to many small and mid-sized companies. And again, from what I understand, nationally, they are, they're really getting pulled on. We actually had a conversation, I had a conversation last week with our Georgia SBA. The guy who leased the, the SBA operations for the state of Georgia, as well as several North Fulton Economic Development counterparts. Really just kind of getting questions and answers from them on things that our respective cities could do to really continue to get information out. If a business already, already has a relationship with an SBA lender, then that works best in their favor. Because you know, you know, with a lot of the bank accounts, they're, they're going to want to do business with, with their existing clients first. So it's in their best interest to make sure that their banks are in fact able to do SBA loans. That helps them out in getting access quicker to the resources that they need. But if you've noticed too, on, on a lot of things like our, our social media avenues, we've, we've been advocating things like encouraging people to buy local as well as encouraging others. I think some of you have kind of shared those on your sociaals too. It's been very well received. And the CVB every day puts out a list of local restaurants offering curbside to go and delivery. And on things like Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, it, it, it gets shared pretty quickly. And that's very encouraging and, and we want to continue to, to have people continue to do that because right now curbside takeout is truly the lifeline of a lot of our restaurants. I can say the same with retail and encouraging folks, if they are doing any shopping to shop online with local retailers, as again, that's just another benefit to them. The, the, the small retailers and restaurants, they feel the impacts of, of the coronavirus slowdown. I think they, they feel the first hit of it, if you will. So we're doing everything we can to campaign and communicate through social channels to support local. This week you'll also see an ad from Economic Development Department in the Herald, basically just encouraging people to buy local as well. We work with App and Media to get that out. Like I said, this should be in the, should be in this week's paper. Another thing that, that I've been doing every day is, is constant communication with our employers. And that's everything from our large to our midsize to our small. I've, I've had recent chats with people like Microsoft, HPE, Lease Plan, High-Risk Studios, Verant, BitPay. Just a lot of our folks that employ hundreds and thousands and they've already had operations underway to work remotely anyway. Kind of curious on the backend of, of what the effects of COVID-19 means from a, a commercial real estate standpoint. As companies are realizing now how, how nimble and flexible their workers can be in working from home. And that could potentially lead to companies executing smaller leases in the future. You know, where we are currently a 25 million square foot market, well, a lot of our major employers need that large of a footprint in the future. I, I think, I think we're, you know, we're set to find out as the, as the smoke kind of clears, if you will, with understanding the scope and magnitude of, of some of the future economic impacts, leaving some of our major employers or larger employers on the mid to small size scale. One thing we're going to start doing is with Tech Alpharetta, we're going to start this week calling each of the Tech Alpharetta member companies. Most of these are startup companies. They're small companies that you know, have operations in the incubator, in the innovation center, partnering with the Metro Atlanta Chamber. It'll, it'll be Karen Cashin, Grant Wayne Scott from Mac and myself, just checking on the smaller tech startups and making sure those folks are okay. Another part of that too is understanding what resources we may be able to provide down the road. Given, of course, now we, we're really kind of leaning on the, on the federal and state to provide resources. But I think a lot of those conversations will lead to sort of some really good information mining on ways that we can respond in the future. Again, once we kind of understand the, the true impacts of, of what COVID-19 means on the, on the startup, to the startup community, to the small business community and to the, to the tech sector. About two weeks ago, we launched an information page on our main economic development website, growalpharetta.com. If you haven't already, be sure to look at that and share it as well. It's got links to a lot of the SBA programs we talked about here, but you know, there's also links to the, the Georgia Small Business Development. There's links to both of our chambers of commerce that have both created dedicated pages to COVID-19 resources. And it looks like every day they're, they're sharing some kind of webinar where companies can learn to take play, can take advantage of working in the virtual environment, the teleworking environment. So those, I think, you know, it's information like that, that's also proven to be very helpful. There's also of course, federal links as well to things like the IRS and the CDC as well, and all the different health and safety precautions that they are recommending that employers and their employees take. Again, we're using social media. We're utilizing that for, for updates and that has a very broad reach to our businesses and residents. And for all the different webinars that are being offered for training and, you know, things like how to use Zoom and how to use WebEx and how to utilize things like Microsoft Teams, those kind of resources to businesses that may not be as tech savvy or are, they're, they're like us, you know, trying to, trying to pivot with working remotely with significant or sizable workforces, you know, it's, it's resources for them to be able to do that and, and continue to, to continue to keep operations going to the best that they can. So there's a, a number of different webinars, you know, we find out about them. We like to share them as, as, as that may be a help to, to someone to, to help with their operations. So, you know, in summary, I think that, again, it's been very encouraging and working with a lot of partners, as you can tell, to really leverage our resources and get communication out to businesses and residents to do, you know, everything from supporting local restaurants with curbside and, and, and takeout and delivery all the way into the different, the different training and, and virtual, virtual events that they're hosting that may be educational and informative to employers navigating, navigating the current environment. From what I'm hearing too, I wanted to be sure to point this out too, but I've also heard from, from several small, mid-sized companies too, that a lot of their operations are, are kind of at a standstill, basically meaning they aren't really getting into any new deals right away. You know, a lot of companies are implementing hiring freezes. So I'm very, I'm very watchful of that. A lot of our different companies and corporations as well. So really kind of keeping it, keeping, keeping a, keeping an ear out for different moves that they make again as a result of COVID-19. So that's kind of the first portion I have, which again, is just about resources. And I'm, I'm a stop for questions here now before I kind of get into the strategic plan element, if anybody has any.
Do we have any questions from council at this time?
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Portion Mitchell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I'm glad to hear you've been reaching out to so many. How are you communicating specifically with the small merchants, not only in downtown, but in Wimberd and, and other business districts to, to let them know of the possibility for the paycheck protection program and things like that? Have you, I know you have a lot of those on an email blast and stuff like that. Have you reached out to them specifically?
Not, no, sir, not specifically. The only real sort of specific information we've gotten to is about the strategic plan survey itself, but specifically we're just kind of doing blanket pushes right now. About the strategic plan survey itself, but specifically we're just kind of doing blanket pushes right now. So that we hit downtown, so that we hit North Point, so that folks from Windward are aware, folks in the Avalon area are aware. So. Uh, not to a geographic focus. I think more so if, if there has been any kind of focus. Um, it's, it's kind of been tailored to industry, if you will, where. You know, we're, we're very corporate, corporate office and technology heavy on the, on the one end. Um, and, and the messaging to them is a little bit different than it is to. The retailers and restaurants. So that's kind of how I've been viewing some of the segmentation as far as resources goes. Uh, but again, all the same, you know, a lot of them, you know, the, the, the SBA loan doesn't change from industry to industry. So. Um, it's really just a matter of sort of, sort of shifting the narrative based on their needs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Thomas at this time? Okay, Matthew, if you want to get into the strategic plan.
Yes, sir. So, um, as you all know, uh, back in, uh. I think back in January, we kicked off the strategic plan, uh, with R K G Associates. Um, the, the total amount was eighty one, three ninety. Uh, of that thirty seven, five was from the Development Authority. And, uh, as I mentioned, uh, before, the economic environment now. Looks very different than it did when, uh, we initially approved of the plan. So. Um, right now I just kind of want to open it up for, for feedback from, from you all in terms of. Um, I think very naturally COVID nineteen will have some kind of effect on, on the plan altogether. And just this past Tuesday, we, we did, uh, push out the, the survey. For residents to fill out too, with respect to getting feedback, uh, about the strategic plan. Um, but as it's currently underway, I'm thinking, you know. Here's, now if we want to sort of, sort of pivot the plan to sort of take more into account. Um, response to things like the coronavirus impact to our different industries. Um, where I, I think this is sort of an opportune time and an opportune moment to do so, but. Uh, right now I'm just kind of looking for feedback if we want to kind of, kind of proceed as is, or. You know, do we want to kind of include more of a closer look, if you will, to, to, um. How, how, you know, kind of a part of the city's overall response plan, if you will.
I believe Karen, Councilwoman Richard had her finger up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Matthew, thanks for the update. Um, my, my, um. Comments about the, um, moving forward with the development plan, I, I'm inclined to really want to consider. Um, hitting a pause button. I think that, um, the, the world is going to look very different. Um, in another maybe four to six weeks than it did when we approved this plan a couple of weeks ago. So. My, my thought is, is that we really need to, um. Assess how things are playing out before we move forward. My sense is that we're going to have very different priorities than we thought we were going to have. When we started the plan a couple of weeks ago.
Any response to that, Matthew?
I'm just writing that in my notes. Um, and, 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 you know, I, I, I can certainly, you know, understand. Um, I can certainly understand, you know, the, the sensitivity to the time and. The very, you know, different environment and the, the overall outlook that that may have. Um, from when we first got into the study itself. Um, I, I think, I think there's still some uncertainty around when we do re, uh, you know. When recovery starts and, and what recovery looks like and, uh, just kind of overall, again, ass- assessing. Sort of the, the magnitude of, of, of what the coronavirus, um, means to, you know, our, our local economic environment. Um, so I, I certainly, I certainly understand the concern. Um, I, and, and I, I, I do think that, um, you know, kind of given when, when we do recovery, recover. Um, I, I, I think a document like this would, would still be good to have. Um, even as things do come together to, to give us a sort of a roadmap or, or a, you know, a playbook, if you will, on, on. Um, things like, you know, even, even business retention and, and expansion. Um, over the course of the next, you know, five, seven years, typical shelf life of a, of a plan of this sort, but, but certainly. Cert- certainly understandable and, and, and certainly, um. I, 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 I can definitely understand the, the sensitivity.
Matthew, it, have you reached out to, um, the consultant that's doing the strategic plan yet? And discuss how he planned to proceed under the circumstances?
I haven't, haven't talked anything about how to proceed. The last communication we had was about the survey itself.
Okay, so maybe, uh, cause I agree with Councilwoman Richard. I, I mean. Think I saw a couple of other heads shaking on the Zoom cams. Um, why don't you and Bob and I circle back as a follow-up and, and maybe reach out to him and talk about. What this looks like and, and I, I think it is going to be difficult to give him. For him to be able to give us anything of real value at such an unstable time. Um, and, and not to mention the fact that we've also touched on something that's been a major concern for me over the past. Week since a little bit of the, the political debates have, have kind of. Been resolved, at least for the near term. And I started to look at what we're going to do and what is the impact of. This on our business community moving forward. You know, Alpharetta has become a boom town over the last six, eight years. Primarily on the back of the redevelopment of our mixed-use commercial real estate. And the hospitality to support that. And this is a gut punch. This virus and everything that's going on, as you talked about, is completely changing the field of how businesses, large and small. Are, are going to adapt to that. So, and I, I think we need to spend some time talking to him about. If he can do it well in the short term and how we can try to make sure that the process is going to give us what we're going to need. Cause I agree, we're going to need a strategic plan even more than we thought six months ago, for sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, Councilman Merkel, did I see your finger up a minute ago?
Um, yes, I was just, uh, pointing out that Karen, uh, Councilman Mitchell pointed to talk.
Do we have any other questions from council? All right. Well, thank you, Matthew. I appreciate it. Look forward to helping get things back moving again as soon as possible.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you all.
Welcome. But I'll finish up the workshop items for tonight. So we've had a little issue in the past with, uh, public comment. Looks like we've got a reasonable number of participants this time that we might be able to. Follow closely to the traditional public comments. So what I'll do now is if. There are anyone, or is there is anyone out there who would like to share three minutes of a public comment? Please raise your hand if you know how to do that on Zoom. And we'll try to do a thirty minutes of public comment, three minutes at a time, maximum thirty minutes. For anyone who wants to share a public comment. And if James, if you get any indications. Please inform them that they need to give their name and their address before any comment. Mayor, I'm seeing no one raising their hand at this time.
All right, sir. Well, since we see no public comments coming forward, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Mr. Regus, I believe you had a report for us, just an update on operations.
Sure, Mayor and Council. Uh, quick update. Uh. We'll start with nine one one calls, uh, from March first through April sixth. Year to year. So we're comparing twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Police Department, uh, they're receiving twenty percent fewer calls. The fire department are right, right at twenty percent also. Uh, of course, we, uh, take calls from Milton also, Milton Police. Calls are down twenty four percent. Milton Fire Calls are down, uh, sixteen percent. Um, in community development, we did, uh, four hundred and sixty inspections last week. We, uh, let's see, we issued some forty-three permits. Thirteen new residential permits were received and thirteen new commercial permits were received. Uh, we took in altogether in community development around a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars the last week. So, uh, you know, good activity there. Uh, courts, you know, back in, uh, March sixteenth, when we. Um, uh, closed all the buildings till, uh, through April twelfth. We moved eight hundred cases, uh, starting April thirteenth. So when we. So last week when we closed the buildings through April thirtieth, we have now moved, um, about twelve hundred and fifty cases starting in May. But, uh, a lot of good is actually coming out of that. We usually have sixty percent of the cases. Um, they, they pay online anyway and, uh, and more, we're finding more people now are paying online. Just to, uh, get things over with at times when, uh, when, you know. You're supposed to come to court and you don't, you get a failure to appear summons and you have your license suspended. And we're kind of, uh, suspending that for the time being to allow people to go ahead and pay their fine without. Uh, going through that hassle and a lot of those people are taking us up on that. So, uh, that is good. So really, uh. That's about it for now. We have a lot of construction projects going on. Uh. The Rucker Road project continues, the Bethany Roundabouts. Uh, that's the Bethany and Mayfield Road, Bethany and Mid Broadwell Road. Morris Road, that project, that's a T-Sloss project. Uh, we're finishing up the punch list there. Uh, the Windward Parkway Triple F's, it's in the city, even though we don't run that project, the CID does. Of course, we're working on the Big Creek Greenway extension that continues. Uh, the Alpha Loop, the gap there on Thompson Street, the Alpha Loop Extension. Is, is, uh, over on Haynesbridge Road, the Kimber Bridge Road Bond Project from, uh. Waters Road to North Point Parkway is, is continuing. Canton Street, Old Canton Street pedestrian improvements are continuing. Sidewalk along Morrison Parkway, uh, Providence Road Sidewalk. And we're replacing a couple of gen- of, of generators at Fire Station eighty-one and eighty-four. So, uh. You know, work continues and, uh. And I think y'all have seen the work in front of, uh, Rose Park on Old Milton Parkway. That's, that work is, is looking good. So. Hats off to, uh, to Pete and his crew as they supervise these, uh, projects. And as they continue to do their work orders, day in and day out.
Thank you, Bob. It's great to see the pe- the people's business still going on. While I, I see, uh, Director Sasevich is on the call. Pete, if you could, are you making sure that we're no longer enforcing on our construction projects? That they have to avoid rush hour? Cause there's really no rush hour. So if they can get out there around eight, eight thirty, that's fine. And if they can work a little later. Through, uh, what normally would be the school, you know, bus hours, I, I think it'd be helpful.
Yes, sir. They're working eight to five with lane closures and working almost from seven to seven in some cases.
Okay, yeah. I, I don't think seven to seven's a problem unless they're in a residential area right now. So that's awesome. Especially while the weather's dry. Let's take advantage of it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other reports from council? I see a finger from Councilman Merkel. And it wasn't his middle finger.
He's muted.
There we go. Back. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
All right, cool. So, um, just from a liaison position to finance with Tom Harris and Sean and that whole department. Um, these guys are just rocking and rolling right now. This is, this is uncharted territories, uncharted waters. Uh, predictions, what's going to happen? Um, I, I've been to his office. I've looked. There's the crystal ball's not in there. I don't know where the hell it is. Uh, the, the expectations that some of us council members have to have answers sooner than later. I'm just asking everybody to back off a little bit. Uh, we're going into budget cycle on top of the uncertainty of the revenues as he presented tonight. Let's all be a little flexible and understand, uh, streamline stuff. Uh, if seven of us are, are calling him or emailing saying, hey, can I get these numbers or can I get these numbers or how about these numbers? Keep in mind, these, these guys, we just came out of audit season, we're going into budget season and you throw this uncertainty on top of it. These guys are busting their ass. And, and I've been in touch with Tom almost on a daily basis, trying to keep track of what he needs. Um, I'm not a finance guy. I'm not running finance. Tom is, he's doing an amazing job. Bob's working with him. All these guys, the mayor's in there. These guys are working this stuff every day. Let's give them some breathing room. Uh, I'm, I'm just asking to give some breathing room as we go through this over the next several weeks and the next month or two. Uh, with some understanding that, that, uh, we got some real professionals, real top-notch professionals in charge of what we're going into. And, uh, let's follow their lead. That's all I'm asking. Thanks, everybody.
I believe Councilman Burnett had waved at him, but. Now it looks like he's gone. So maybe he didn't have anything. Councilwoman Richard, did you have a report?
Um, actually, I, I do have a report item, um, but I also have a question. So the report item is, um. That our D R B board will be moving into a Zoom meeting environment, um, for their April seventeenth meeting. So we've got several, um, applications that are coming forward and, um, they will be. Using the Zoom, Zoom platform and James, if you're not, if you haven't received that request, this help facilitate. If I could ask you to put that on your calendar, that'd be great.
It's on my schedule and I've been working with Brad. He's got a good handle on it now, but I'll be there to support him as needed.
Excellent. And then, uh, two other things I wanted to also just, uh, say thanks to Pete and his Public Works Group. I had asked them to, um, put up a sign for the, um, the Greenway Extension Project on Windward. I was getting lots of questions and calls from folks about what was going on there. So. He's got the, uh, the signage up east and west about the fact that it's a, it's a bond project and I just want to thank him for getting that done so quickly. And then my last, uh, question actually is, is a follow-up to what Councilmember Merkel was speaking about in regards to finance. Um, and I appreciate Tom and his team for, for doing everything that they're been, been doing and trying to assess. The impact and obviously we're not out of it yet, so it's hard to project exactly what the impact will be, but. I would like to suggest that for the April twentieth meeting, that we also include finance, a finance workshop. So that we can continue to have that dialogue and, uh, continue to get the updates from finance as to, you know, how things are playing out.
Okay, I, I'll go ahead and work with Director Harris on a revised schedule, give y'all some idea of what the budget process is going to look like. We don't want to pile too much on top of the budget process, but we want to incorporate as much information as we can. Get it out to you and the public. So we'll, we'll get something to you within the next few days, give you some idea of what that looks like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's it.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell has his hand up.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank the Alpharetta citizens as, as a whole for social distancing and paying attention to those guides. Um, I think it's really making a difference in our city and also. The ones who have reached out to neighbors and, and the elderly and doing kind deeds, it's, it. It goes without mention, uh, a lot of times, but thank you for doing that. And also, um, kudos. We need all the good news we can get right now. And Director Rogers, um, on his own volition, um. Made use of our staff that was off and by calling all of our seniors who would normally go to our senior centers. Calling them each day and making, uh, difference in their lives, making sure they don't have any needs that need to be. Taken care of and that they're also checked on for a wellness check and just to say hello, let them know we're thinking about them. So. Director Rogers and your entire staff, thank you for what you're doing.
You're here. Were there any other reports? Okay, well, I, I will just put in one last little plug here. Since a lot of people are. Not preoccupied with working out of their home and, and have a little time on. To binge watch Netflix and things like that. I'd like to suggest that all of you, if you have not filled out the census yet. Please take a few minutes to do that. If you'll notice, all of these programs that are being released from. If you'll notice, all of these programs that are being released from the federal government to help support our businesses and our residents, many of those are distributed through census data. And so it is very important. I believe the last time I checked, we had about fifty-one percent of people who have already filled out online because like seven quick questions online. I did it last week. So if you can do that, it really makes a difference. It's important for all of us. Not only do the federal government make a lot of financial decisions and distribute funds based on that, the state does as well. But it also helps us when we're making zoning decisions and we're making policy decisions about transportation and things like that. A lot of that information does come from census data. So please do your duty, fill out the census while you're in self quarantine at this time. So, thank you.
Mayor, if I could quickly interrupt on that note.
Yes.
The 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 North Fulton Cities, Milton led the charge on it. They threw a gauntlet down. And have have created a challenge for the North Fulton Cities for who has the best census participation percentage of their population. Right now, they they are in the lead. Johns Creek was in second and we were in third. So we need all the residents' help so we can remind our 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 younger sisters out there who the alpha is in the North Fulton Pac.
All right, we need to get a tote board up on the website then. Thank you for that, James. If there's no other reports, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your participation and your patience throughout all of this. We look forward to seeing you in City Hall very soon. I'll adjourn this meeting now. Thank you all.
See, you know what? I always